Okay, let's call the meeting. Thank you all for coming tonight. Roll call, please.
Present.
Mayor Gene Krueger.
Alive and well, thank you.
Mitch Magnus.
Present.
Linda DeWolff.
Present.
Bill Boswell.
Present.
Heath Kirkpatrick.
Present.
Joe Williams.
Present.
Wayne Kump.
Present.
Okay, thank you. Pastor, would you pray?
Yes, please stand and pray with me. God, we just thank you for this time to get together as city leaders. God, we recognize that you've put us in these positions of leadership, and Lord, we ask for your wisdom. God, we thank you for the city that we live in, for our civil servants, everyone that protects us, and that works so hard to make this city great. God, again, thank you for your grace over Harrison. Again, give us wisdom as we do business tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Approval of December minutes.
Make a motion for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? No. Okay, Department reports. Chief Grady is in the Caribbean right now, and our other chief-
Probably created chaos.
Our other chief is home, going through a lot of pain. He had to leave a few hours ago, so we have Sergeant Smith with us tonight. But he asked me to make the report. I handed it out to you. You all have a copy of the police report. Bill is handing it all out to you right now, and you have a copy, and we've highlighted the areas that Chris usually goes over with you, so if you can take note of that. I think that's explanation enough, so that'll be our police report. Okay, let's move on to public works. Wade.
Well, I apologize in advance. I've got several items that I need to go over, so I guess since Chief Grady's not here, I'm gonna fill in for taking up some time.
Right.
You know, we keep talking a little bit every month about the idea of Lake Harrison versus Crook Creek Creek. Gammon Fish and the Nature Conservancy will be here at the February 6th committee meeting to give a status update. They are also going to be asking for a commitment of $15,000 to do a 30% design. Total cost is $20,000. Gammon Fish is pitching a five. That's all that's been, I guess, committed to it at this point, so after they give the update, they will be asking for money. And you guys can stop me if you have any questions while I'm going through this, but this is, most of this, I'm just trying to keep informational. I want to give a quick update on our sewer INI study that we've been working on, started a couple of years ago. The latest phase was smoke testing two of our basins. The main goal is to find where storm water, groundwater's getting into the sewer system, getting the wastewater plant we're having to treat. One of the reasons why this is important is, and we've kind of hit a point, is our average flow for 2019 at the wastewater plant broke the 80% threshold of our treatment capacity. What that means is the ADQ will probably put a requirement on us to start planning an expansion at the plant. Our hope and our plan is actually to identify these sources of water getting into the system that don't need to be there, and get that number back down below 80%, so we don't have to be worrying about millions of dollars in the not-so-distant future. We do expect that being proactive, having already started this process before we hit that 80%, should help when dealing with the ADQ. Just to give you an idea of the two basins that were studied, kind of the north part of town and going out west towards the airport and out Industrial Park Road. There's 10 total basins in the city. When we did the flow monitoring back in 2018, these were the two worst basins. So when we got a heavy rain event, we saw a higher peak in flow in these basins than we did anywhere else in the city. So the next steps, well, I guess first, it included over 27 miles of sewer line that were smoke tested just in these two basins last year. We identified 191 sources of inflow and infiltration. 110 of those were on private plumbing. Cleanouts would be one of the main sources, just defective service lines, too. 81 of those were on our side of the system, so we've got a lot of work to do to start knocking some of this out. Just to give you an idea, on the peak inflow from a one-inch in 60-minute rain is adding just in these two basins from what we found, over 1 million gallons a day. That's a huge number, and if we can knock that out, that's gonna help us a lot going forward from a regulation standpoint. So our next steps is we're gonna hit the low-hanging fruit. It's gonna be the easy, easy ones to fix that are getting a lot of infiltration. Broken cleanouts on people's houses that are down below ground. You know, anything running across their yard, we've got a lot of sources in there. We've got, we've found a few area drains at private and commercial locations that are connected to our sewer lines that should not be. So we'll be trying to work with those property owners to find a decent solution that's not too hard on them. And then we are gonna start planning on looking at moving on to our next two worst basins, which are basins O and 3, or O3 and O4. That's gonna be the downtown area. That's gonna be a little bit more difficult to do, just because we're dealing with a lot older part, a lot older part of town, and we have a feeling it's gonna be a lot more burdensome on some of our commercial areas down here, because we think we're gonna find a lot of plumbing deficiencies from a lot of the older plumbing. I'm working on getting quotes put together for that. From the original amount that was allocated for these studies, I think we've got about 114,000 left in that amount. That's probably not gonna be enough to do downtown, but I'm waiting to get the estimates back, and then I'll start looking to see how we can fund it going forward. Was at the Carol Boone Board meeting, the most recent one that they had, and we were notified that the Corps of Engineers has reallocated water in Beaver Lake for us. And before I talk too much about it, this is a good picture from their report. The blue section called the conservation pool, that is where water treatment plants pull their water out of, as far as the way they divvy it up for who gets what. Back in, I'm not gonna go over too much of the history. 2001, Carol Boone requested an extra 6 million gallons a day allocation out of Beaver Lake. 2020, that 6 million gallons was approved. So 19 years later, we got notification, and nobody even knew they had finished the report. Nobody knew that they had published it. It happened to be one of the Beaver Water District. People ran across it one day and started letting everybody know. So that's good. That helps ensure that we've got enough water to carry us into the future as the city grows, and Carol Boone itself, as all of the cities that are part of Carol Boone grow. The bad part is, is that's gonna come with an extra $158,000 a year in cost, because you have to pay the Corps of Engineers to have that money, have that water reserved for your use. Based off of current usage right now, that's about six cents per 1,000 gallons of water sold. So we can expect in the future, a rate increase directly related to this reallocation. Now fortunately, Carol Boone had enough foresight to start setting some reserve money back to cover this additional cost in order to defer the rate increase. We're estimating that's probably gonna be about two years. If we're lucky, it could be three. It's probably gonna be within two years, they'll be passing on this six cent increase. So with that being said, and some other items that'll be coming up next month, I do wanna kind of talk a little bit about our memorandum of understanding with Carol Boone. I know the rate increase we got last year wasn't necessarily well-received. A lot of that was a timing and notification issue. But just a little history, you know, we've been under this agreement since 1998 with the Carol Boone Water District. And the MOU pretty well outlines the member city's financial commitments and obligations to the district. I'm gonna try and not read all of this verbatim, but point out that the total cost of construction, maintaining, operating, and expanding the facilities must be borne equitably by the users of the water produced through the system. And by users, that's us, Green Forest, Bearable, and Eureka Springs. So they have to continue to make sure that they are providing enough capacity and water for us to meet our needs. They are contractually obligated to do that. I highlighted the provide raw water supply stores, because that's what they did by getting the reallocation at Beaver Lake. Okay, the district will present future facility expansions that would require an increase in the amount of the district's bonded indebtedness to the cities for their consideration. They have to go to each city when they are going to refinance or extend their bonds and get resolutions from, approval from those cities. They have to have three out of four cities approve that, otherwise they cannot move forward. This is a, this is an important one. If they do not get that approval, they are relieved of its obligation to meet the future needs of our water systems. So we don't, we say no, they say you're getting all the water you got. So, just to put it in simple terms. Each of the cities will pay for all water purchased from the district at such rates to require to provide revenue sufficient, together with revenues from demand charges, so on and so forth, to enable the district to pay all debt service, purchase of water storage rights from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, pay actual O and M costs, maintain all covenants and reserves required by bonds issued by the district, and maintain the reserves as may be established by the district for equipment depreciation, emergencies, capital expansion, et cetera. All of these things add up to what is called the total system costs in the agreement. This is the good news. If the revenues from the total water sales exceed the total system costs, so if they bring in more money in one year than they pay to operate the system, they give rebates back to the cities. They set those rebates at the last board meeting. Ours is approximately $37,000 this year. Those have ranged anywhere from as low as, I think, 10 to 15. I'm not sure what the highest has been. They're typically not very high in the grand scheme of things, which shows that they're doing a pretty good job of projecting their costs over the year and setting their rates to match what's needed.
Is that the money that they've been setting aside for that?
No, this is, this is an annual, basically, they, they're not, I guess basically, they operate as a nonprofit. At the end of the year, they've gotta get to a sum zero. So when I say they've gotta get to a sum zero, that means there's another side to those rebates. If the system costs exceed the revenues-
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, I have that one ready.
We get the chip in.
Yep. All users of the districts will be charged with the difference between, will be charged with the shortfall. So if they run under for the year, we can get a bill at the end of the year that we are not at all accounted on. So the reason I kind of point all this stuff out is, I mean, I myself was frustrated with the quick move on the rate increase last, last year. Part of that was just a communication issue, and those were going to the trash when they shouldn't have. But I just want to make sure we were all aware, you know, of our responsibility in actually funding the system, because that's how it was set up. It was the four main cities. They fund it, they get the benefit. I do want to update you before I move on, actually. What's coming next month, that I also kind of want to talk a little bit about this, is Carol Boone is looking at refinancing their bonds, their current debt. They're doing this in order to free up about $5 million for some capital improvements over the next few years. So since that is something that they have to get permission from, their engineers will be here at the committee meeting next week, or next month, in two weeks, to make a presentation and ask for a resolution supporting, approving the refinancing of the bonds. They do not anticipate any rate increase as a result of the financing, but that's also based off of currently quoted rates that they're seeing. If, if rates do go up before they're able to refinance, they may have to come back for a rate increase at some point to make up that cost. Either that, or they will just have to get less money out for their capital improvements. Just a heads up on a few items that I've got coming next month, as far as budget adjustments. I know nobody likes seeing them this early in the year, but I did have an error on a salary line. If I don't get it corrected, I effectively gave an employee a pay cut that didn't deserve it. So I will need to fix that. I am reducing the new equipment line item and wastewater treatment. We were able to address some of our needs towards the end of last year, so that we don't need to do it this year. So I want to get that money pulled out of the budget. And then also, I've got two infrastructure projects that I would like to go ahead and add some money into this year's budget for. First one is to get the traffic study and conceptual design done for the daily drive extension project. This is not a project I had planned on doing any work on for at least two or three years, just to get more done on Goblin Drive. As a result of a meeting with a local business and some potential plans that they have in the future, we need to get a little better idea of what we're gonna be doing through there, so that we can coordinate with them. It's just one of those things that the need arose to go ahead and get a little bit of the jump start. I'm working on getting pricing for that, so hopefully I will have that by February 6th in order to get that started. And then also, we had allocated $150,000 out of infrastructure for water and sewer SCADA. We had completed the water portion of the project a little over a year ago, and we've been sort of, we've been working on formulating a plan on how we want to attack doing the sewer side of that. I've got about 64,000, at least 64,000 remaining in that. We're getting in all of our estimates right now, and I should be, I plan on asking for about 40,000 to 45,000 of that remaining money to be added into this year's budget, so we can go ahead and get that done. And that will end up closing out that project once we get it done. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, Wade. Chief Lowery.
Yeah, in front of you will be a small tree for each of you, so I apologize for that. Give you plenty to read. So based on my report, I'm gonna do a couple of things. I was gonna really want to talk about 2019 as a whole briefly. I know that-
State of the city address coming up, and I don't want to step on his toes in his presentation, but, so, so the long and short of it is, we basically run 1,936 calls this year, and that was up from 1,196 in 2018. Where we got a lot of that increase was the new way we're running EMS, we're running all medicals in the city. I felt like that we need to provide a service to the citizens regardless of what the problem is. If it's an emergency, we need to respond, so we've kind of picked that up.
And can I make a point to that, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
I have heard more comments in regard to that than anything with the fire department, that people feel like they're getting more value for their tax dollar.
That's good to hear. I like to hear that. And going along with that, we have also been training our personnel as EMTs. I now require all new hires to be EMTs. Any existing personnel for promotional purposes, that's fixed. Right now, we have 19 EMTs on staff with three in class right now, so we're slowly gaining on that. My goal is to have 75% of that, which was already, by the way, of the line personnel. I myself and a couple others have it, but we don't respond to that call. So we'll move on to that. We also done about 15,000 hours of training last year. That's my next thing that we wanted for the guys to get going to do. An EMT is a lot of hours, and the result of that is paying comp time for going to those classes, so we're getting them trained up. They also been doing hydrants, hose testing. They stay busy, so I do appreciate that comment about the EMS call. That helps us a lot. Couple of things that we've done last year that's not gonna be involved in his, as I was gonna talk about, is we did have hold, the first one we've had in years and years is we had an HIWA conference. It's arson investigators. We had the conference here in Harrison, spent two days burning cars, had a lot of people in town, motels, so I think that was real good for our city. That was a very good plus. The next thing is, whoops, sorry about that, is, as you all know, Jim McCammon passed away. Prior to his passing, we did dedicate the Training Tower to his memory. Jim was very critical in my education and training through the years, so I'm missing a lot. We are, this year, gonna get the tower painted and cleaned up and fixed up and spruced up for moving toward the new building, so. And we had a Grady graduate fire academy. I want you all to see that.
So it can happen.
It can. Spencer graduated this year. We're very proud of him. I've got one down there right now.
Another Grady?
No, a Lowery. Imagine that.
Oh!
Yeah. A Lowery in the fire cabinet will fix and send two more at the end of next month. We're gonna have three going this year, so. And then our mayor washing some bees.
His dog.
Yeah. So we had a good year. I appreciate everything you all have done for us, and is there any questions about anything? I know you got a book to read, so there may be questions like two weeks from now.
Well, I want to echo what Mitch said, but what is, it's, it's very nice to be out and about, and I'll be honest, you see fire trucks respond before anybody else has ever moved. That includes ambulance, that includes police, it's the fire, leading the fact to go get it, so you've gotten to do a great job.
Thank you.
Well, you bet. Thank you, Mark. Okay, Luke.
I don't have a whole lot, so I'm making sure, but you have some numbers here to present. Last minute, we did get sales tax numbers here this afternoon. My goal is always to be over $100,000, and we did it this last month by $26, so that was a good one. And all that to be said, we actually had eight months this last year over $100,000, which is great. Would've been nine, except for obviously, if everybody remembers back to January, when we had the big take back. That being said, the counting portion that we get of sales tax still was up 1% over last year, even without that. If you take that out of consideration, and if we would've made the same as we had the year before, we would've been up 3.6%. So that's good numbers. We were down just a little bit on the city. We didn't quite make it back to the same amount as last year. We were down a little less than a half percent. But again, if you take out that first month, it would've been about 3.3% increase. So everything's trending up as far as our sales tax. It's great news for the city, great news for our businesses here in town, so wanted to be able to report that. Also, property tax is another thing that we like to look at. It was up at 1% as well, so again, everything's increasing in value, and that's what we'd like to see. One of the things I hate to report on, but I feel it's necessary, unfortunately, in doing the reconciliation of the December bank statement, so we came across three checks that weren't ours. Somebody had created checks and put all our information on there and cashed them. We're lucky, it was less than $3,000, but that being said, still, we are going to start on what's called positive pay. It is a item through the bank where we will actually submit all of our information, the check numbers, to who it's to, and the amounts. We'll send all that to the bank, and we will, or they won't be able to clear anything else besides those check amounts and those check numbers. So that being said, that's a program that's out there that we're gonna take advantage of, actually signed us up today on it. We found out about it Wednesday, and that amount of time took to get the paperwork ready, we tried to get that done as quick as possible. So I say it's a lesson learned. Luckily, it wasn't that expensive, although, you know, to you and me, it probably is, but in the grand scheme of things for us, it's not as big as it could've been. So we're gonna try to head that off in the past and get that corrected. We should be receiving that money back also into our bank account here shortly, so as soon as I hear back from that, I will let you all know.
In a brief discussion with Luke during our weekly meeting, he brought this to my attention, and I can assure the council and the city that with a positive pay system, things like that can occur again. So he's taken the right steps, and you can feel confident in what he's doing, so. In fact, we're not gonna actually sustain a financial loss is a positive, so.
I happened to go to a class on this earlier this month, I believe it was, and they talked about it, and they actually presented me with a fake check that had a million dollars on it that could've easily, just as easily been cashed. So, you know, we, that came to our forefront.
Luke, would you explain to them how this happens? The process that the fee goes through that you explained to me?
Well, basically, at some point in time, they have acquired our banking information, whether that be a canceled check, we wrote a business a check, and after they got done cashing it, you know, if they get those back, and for some reason, if it goes into a, instead of being shredded, it goes to landfill, or, I mean, it could be anything, of how they acquire that information, as well as individuals, when we write them checks, you know, they can get that information. It's out there. It's always out there for any business. So, you know, there is ways to obtain that information just through everyday life. And once they get that, anybody can create checks, they can put our name on it, they can put our routing and account numbers on there, and there's not much we can do about it, other than, you know, going through this positive pay system. So lots of people can attempt this. Unfortunately, it happened, but we're going to try to mitigate that from happening in the future. But yeah, anybody can really get anybody's information, if they look hard enough, and if not everything is shredded, that has bank account information.
And I'm told what they do is, they'll get the check, and then they'll find a homeless person, and they'll get the homeless person ID, and they'll send them into the bank to cash it. That way, if somebody's caught, it's the homeless person that's caught. And they might, it might take 10, but 1 out of 10, or whatever the number is, it's a numbers game, just like anything else. But they use the homeless people to cash those checks, and that's what I thought was really interesting, and found it beyond my belief that they would do that, but of course they would.
Yeah, this particular one was to the same individual three different times. From what I'm understanding, it appears that the guy used his home address and his own bank account, so he wasn't real smart about it. But we're hoping to, I turned that over into our police department, filed a police report and an affidavit, so that way, everybody could at least look into the situation a little further. Now, maybe it's not actually the case, but we're open to get it resolved as soon as possible.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Luke. David, do you have anything?
No, sir, not unless the council has any questions for me.
Any questions for David tonight? Okay. Chuck?
No big reports tonight, unless we got any questions. This tournament, upcoming tournaments and fixing to do leak signups, so.
Anything for Chuck? Shonda is out counting homeless people right now. That's exactly what she's doing. We'll report on that a little later. Okay, let's go into committee assignments. Joel?
What am I gonna turn that over to you?
Perfect. I'd like it back to me. We have two committees that are doing a swap, as you all know, and that's Chris and Bill. And because we have not approved that yet, tonight, you'll find that you still have your old committees. So I think you knew that, but I wanted to make sure you understood why. So with that said, could I have a motion to approve the 2020 committee assignments?
I move.
Okay?
Second.
Got a motion and a- So with that said, could I have a motion to approve the 2020 committee assignments?
I move.
Okay? Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, let's go on to finance. Anything Mitch?
Not a thing. Tonight for finance, Luke covered everything we have. But I did want to make a clarification on our previous vote. Do we need to, we approve the standing committees, do we need to approve any of these appointments as well?
I don't know. Joel says no.
You already just carried through.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing it up.
You bet.
Linda?
Yeah, we have Wade, I think it was going to look into the holiday pay clarification on language, I guess.
Yes, we have a proposed resolution update our personnel policy to clarify how we handle paying employees when they have to work on a paid holiday. The proposed change will set it up to where if an employee gets called in, has to work on, and just also step back before I move forward, this is pertaining to non-uniformed employees only. Uniformed employees have their own policies and their own handbooks. If an employee's called in on a paid company holiday, they would be paid one and a half hours of the time that they actually work, plus they would get their eight hours due on that company holiday. As we discussed at committee, it's been handled a couple of different ways over the years, based off the way the policy was written. It was either double time plus your holiday or straight time plus your holiday. Just kind of finds a middle ground to help alleviate some of the concerns from employees that felt like something was taken away from them. And also hopefully gets, make sure that this is very clear going forward, so that other administrations in the future are able to interpret it how they want.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Mitch, second was Wayne. Any discussion?
One other question. I assume the primary reason for this is clarification that there wasn't anybody complaining or we didn't have a problem with pay on a holiday that people didn't understand or...
It is a clarification because past administration changed the way it was being done because of interpretation, so there were complaints.
And the way it ends up, it's either an increase or a decrease, depending how you interpret it. But it's clear now that it's a time and a half. There's no room for interpretation. Okay, let's roll call.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Mary Jean?
My fire chief pretty well covered everything and brought the attention to all of our EMTs and the new trainees that we have going to school. What, we have three new ones going now, so.
Yeah, well, it's good that you're here tonight. I think you missed last night.
I did.
Good to see you again.
Glad to be here.
All right, we'll move down to Bill.
Okay, we've got a few items to go through. The first is the street right of way in regards to Mike Woods' property. I'm going to let Wade take the lead on this because apparently we've been doing it wrong on these vacation, the vacating of property from the beginning. Do we need backup?
No. That's what we got.
Oh, no, it's Chris.
No, we're not switching tonight.
You have the construction manager contract.
Somebody's got construction manager.
Oh, I see, I see, I see. You were talking about that, you were down to the policies, Bill. Bill, it's your, your go, jump back up to public works. Pretend it's 2019.
I have nothing.
You have...
Nothing.
You need to turn it over to Wade.
His agenda has nothing.
I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before we go any farther here. Obviously, this is a changed agenda from what I received, so this is like, we have the small problem we need with the rest. I don't know how it needs to be fixed. Jeff and I talked earlier this week about it. Items are not getting dropped into the shared file where we can take a look at them in an adequate amount of time before we need to discount them. I can't speak for the rest of them, but that's not satisfactory to me as a council member. And it's kind of like this, it's a little bit embarrassing to find out that I have two items under there and I had no idea that I did. So with that said, I would like to see some kind of remedy found that at least we have the information for council slash committee meetings on the Monday before we meet on Thursdays.
I think the original agreement that we had last time we discussed it was Friday, yes.
Right. We've had difficult with the last 12 months.
We're like Mondays.
We've not been able to meet the Friday one since the first month we set out. And I understand things change. However...
I'm with you.
It is. It's quite frustrating because I don't like to come into a meeting where at least have had an opportunity to read over the things that apply in our committee and/or it's going to require all council action. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Matt, I'll shut up. Construction manager at-risk contract approval, Wade.
Yes, sir. As we discussed at committee, we were finalizing negotiations on the construction manager at-risk contract with Davis Construction. We've got that finalized for the pre-construction services. I am requesting permission for the mayor to execute this agreement. It only includes at this time the pre-construction services, which would be at a, basically it's set up, they'll bill us on an hourly basis for their time, materials and needs and stuff like that, with a not to exceed maximum of $20,000 to get us through pre-construction. Once we get through that, we establish the guaranteed maximum price of the construction contract of the construction project itself. I'll be coming back with that number and asking for permission for the mayor to execute an addendum to this agreement. And I'd be happy to answer any questions as far as what all this would include. Pre-construction services are basically, they are going to work with our architect to stay on top of what the cost of this is going to be. They know more about construction costs than the architect does. So having them on board now helps make sure we keep this under budget as we get through.
Are these funds already in the budget?
They are not. We, we have, we do have accounts set up and it would be spread across, but police, fire and administration currently distributing costs based off of the estimated portion that each fund is going to be paying once we actually move forward with construction.
Do we need to amend the budget?
We will have to amend the budget.
So what order?
Not at this time.
Okay, that's the reason I asked. So what, what kind of motion do you need permission to approve?
It is, it is to approve or to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement with Davis Construction.
And is that in the form of a resolution or an ordinance?
That's a simple up and down.
Simple up and down.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you.
And we have a annual construction material.
Yes, we annually go out for a few different bids for items that are just something we're going to use all through the year. I'll try to be brief. Gasoline and diesel contract, we received a single bid from Petroleum Traders Corporation. They have had, they've had the bid in the past. They actually had part of the bid for last year. Their bid for gasoline was 26.54 cents per gallon of markup over the rack price of gas on the day that we make the delivery. I know Councilman Magnus is well aware of rack price and all that. Our contract is set up to where we pay a markup over what the company is paying at the gas terminal where they get the gas. So anytime we purchase gas, they have to provide us documentation of what that cost was and the total we pay is going to be the rack price plus the markup. The bid for diesel was 9.33 cents per gallon above rack price. Just to give you an idea of where that sits, we had them submit the bids with rack price for January 10th, just to give us an illustration of what it looks like. And it was about 25 cents below what we were seeing at the pump that day for gasoline. So doing this helps us save a lot of money in gas throughout the year. I will give credit to Councilman Magnus. This was, he's the one that helped me set it up to do it this way.
And I will attest that's very good pricing for the city, primarily on the gasoline. Very good.
You're a gas man.
I have gas, yes.
So I will be requesting permission to award that contract to Petroleum Traders Contract, Petroleum Traders Corporation.
You get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passed.
Yeah, that's taxes, transportation. The next annual contract that we received bids for was for concrete and concrete materials. We only received one bid on this from APAC Central or ARCO is what we know and has around here. Prices were probably about 5% to 6% across the board, higher than what we saw last year, but that's pretty consistent with what we're seeing in construction prices right now in general. I'm not going to go down the list. Well, 35 PSI concrete, which is Class AA, is what we use more than anything else. And their bid price was $113.36 per cubic yard, which is probably about as good we're going to get right now with construction prices going up the way they are. So again, I'm asking for permission to award this contract to APAC Central ARCO.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, and who was the second?
Pick one.
Okay. Motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passed.
Third contract that we opened bids for was for street repair materials. This includes various types of gravel base, materials of that nature. We received two bids, one from Leo Jernigan Construction Company and one from APAC Central. Since this is just a material bid, this is one that we can split up easily between the two based off of the low prices. APAC was low on pretty much all of the freight onboard prices. They were low on all the freight onboard prices because I had to reject Jernigan's bid for those. They did not follow our request. Did not include all pricing in a single price for those items. I believe you all have the bid tabs and information. I'm not going to make you listen to me read all of these out loud, but I would like to request permission to, or authorization to award this contract as a split contract to both APAC Central and Jernigan.
Make a motion to approve the bid as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mitch and Wayne, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passed.
Okay. This is the last contract that we opened bids on was for street overlay milling and repair services. We received three bids on this contract, one from Jernigan Construction, one from APAC Central and one from Hutchins Construction. They're out of southwest Missouri and northwest Arkansas. This one was a little more difficult to evaluate. It's not a contract that I can split up easily, but it's also one where in some places, in this case, Hutchins was lower than Jernigan and other places, Jernigan was lower than Hutchins. Basically, an evaluation of some various sized jobs that we'd be doing through this contract to kind of get an idea who's going to give us the best, best price overall, instead of looking at the individual items. If you look at the very last page on this item, either on the drive or on the packet that I have left there, if you look at these examples, the vast majority of them, the lower construction price would come from Jernigan Construction. I did talk to Hutchins today, just to verify that they would agree with my evaluation that it would probably be best to go ahead and award the entire contract to Jernigan. They had no objection to that. They did not want to say, you know, they didn't want to be doing milling on roads for Jernigan to come in and pay. So it's just something that we can run into in a contract like this and we just got to look and see which overall provides the best overall cost to the city. So I'm asking for authorization to award this contract to Jernigan Construction.
Make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I like how that bid was laid out and explained.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passed. Is that it, Wayne?
I'm still up next, next committee.
Oh, you are?
I'm done.
Okay, good. We're going down. We're moving.
Street right of way.
Yes, we have a resolution before you in order to schedule a public hearing at next, preferably at next month's regular business meeting, to just, to take public input on the requested vacation of street right of way by Mr. Mike Woods. This is kind of run through committee as far as the actual right of way vacation. We had planned to actually do the public hearing at this meeting, but we've come to the conclusion that we need a resolution to actually schedule the public hearing. So Grant, I think the idea is to schedule the public hearing for 6 o'clock, the night of the regular business meeting in February, and we'll get through that and then just move on to council.
Okay.
Make a motion. We move to have the street right of way public hearing at the next council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Need a roll call on a resolution.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Okay, the next item.
Go ahead.
We can point that Chief Gradie has identified that they can take care of what they needed there without a shoplifting ordinance, so we can eliminate the need for that ordinance. You can go ahead and take marijuana.
All right. Just waiting to layer up. Okay, so tonight, were we looking at putting it on its first reading?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Suppose we should entertain any discussion that we might have about this?
Let me, let me say something too. I'll go back to the reading issue. Chief Gradie would like to get this passed as soon as possible. He made that comment and I wish he was here to speak for it. But we also made a commitment that we wanted to give issues of importance time. And I think that this is something that probably we ought to give some time to. Maybe, maybe it doesn't need three readings, but maybe, maybe at least more than one. But we'll let you decide and we can...
What does this call for legally? Does it, does it call for three readings? Needs three readings, okay.
We can do three tonight, we can do one tonight, that would be if the council's pushing.
I make a motion that we place the ordinance on its first reading by title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second.
Suspension of the rules to, sorry, go ahead.
Suspension of the rules, I'm sorry.
Suspension of the rules.
And I restate the motion. Make a motion, we suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its first reading by title only.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joe Williams? Joe Williams.
Yes.
Wayne Coe.
Yes.
Chris Head.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance regulating the ingestion of medical marijuana by persons possessing a state-issued medical marijuana card within the city of Harrison, Arkansas.
Okay, and for you folks that don't know exactly what this means, the state has laid out rules, but they didn't make them enforceable until we had the ordinance. And so that's why we're creating this ordinance that restricts people from using marijuana in public places and various places and kind of putting it in containers that would be attractive to kids and, and a whole bunch of things. But the state laid out the rules, but they didn't make them enforceable. So we had to pass the ordinance to make them enforceable. I'm told we're taking the lead on that in the state of Arkansas. So, you know, again, the police department's doing a good job in that area. They brought it to us. So that's for information purposes only and I assume that's the end of that issue for tonight.
Well, I agree with what Chairman Head said in the, in the committee meetings, but with due respect to that, I will defer to the mayor and I will not make a motion to place it on its second reading or third reading.
Okay. Business license.
Yes. We're going to amend the business license pertaining to number of employees and Chief, Larry, did you want to speak to this?
Well, I know that there was some discussion about timeliness and goodness on the drive for everybody to look at. So I can kind of summarize what we're doing, but basically we've further given a definition to an employee as well as residential, commercial landlords. That's in the ordinance as written. Now, there has been also discussion about nonprofits, what the definition of that is and we've been talking back and forth. So I think, and it's you all's pleasure of course, but I would, I would think that we probably need to take this back to committee and readdress this in the committee.
Sound good to everybody else?
Okay, so we'll get that on next panel. All right, now we're moving into some very exciting stuff. Reminder of our next meeting, we're going to have that on the 6th of February rather than the 13th. 13th would be the normal date, but several of us are going to be down in Little Rock so we're going to move it up to the 6th, but it'll still have two weeks in between now and then. So that's just a reminder. The, the next thing I want to talk about is the Good Neighbor Award. This is something we came up with last, last meeting. We want to recognize a person, persons that help people or spread goodwill about our community or various things and, you know, there's so many people we can recognize in that way, but this first award, we want to go to Caleb and Rachel Couch. They are here tonight, but we also have someone that wants to speak and share a little bit about what they've been able to achieve in such a short period of time. It's just been amazing what, what has happened in the last six weeks with these folks. And you are?
I am April Matthews.
Hi, April.
I'm one of the admins with Rachel and Caleb's group. And I started this group on December 10th and Rachel had this idea in her mind, this vision, that we could start a community group, that it didn't matter how much money you made. If you had something to give away, you could give it away, or if you had a need, you could post that you had a need and then the community could decide whether they had something to help you or not. Well, by the time we had our Christmas Eve dinner and invited the town to be a part of that, we'd already responded to a couple of fires where the town just, the community just came out and outpour like it was their own home. Went in while the house was still burning and was already helping out of what we were going to be able to help them with, the families need, to meet their needs. And then after the house burnt, Caleb and Rachel had formed a group to go out and clean up the home. So we didn't want to just leave them with just, you know, supplying their needs for once they left their home. But in this, there's been many groups that have formed that have been able, people are finding their way to help their neighbors out. So we've got some like, keep pointing to Caleb and Rachel, but he helps fix cars. Like people can post on the page that they have a car problem and a lot of times he's gotten out and helped. Or we've had where we've had construction crews come in and offer their expertise and their help to help somebody rebuild or build a wheelchair ramp. And we've had other ministries that have been birthed in this whole deal. In the six weeks and two days, we have 3,886 members. And that is local businesses, that's local churches, that's the mayor. So there's so many needs that by the time somebody posts that they actually have a need, there's somebody in that that wants to help out. We've got a, a new group for mothers that are expecting babies and we've got one, it's a veteran group to help, see if she can't help some of the homeless and, and then I help with special needs and medical supplies so we can get ICAN closer to us so we can help with our area children. So anyway, Rachel and Caleb could better tell you about their start and how they got this to be so successful.
All right. Come on up, folks.
You guys heard the bus, right?
Well, hi. First and foremost, thank you so much. Quite an honor. I saw that when, after the last meeting you guys had and you posted that and I was like, oh my gosh, Caleb, did you see that? And at first it was exciting. I was like, that's awesome, it's being recognized, but just a split instant later, I almost felt guilty because there's so much more to this than all I did was start a page, you know? That's all I did and it took a huge group of people, people that have been doing this so much longer. Like I thought about Ruby Kate, for instance, you know, the great thing that she does and Citizens in Action, Lori Howell. There are so many people that have been doing this so much longer, House of Hope, that were so deserving of this, that, you know, they, they put in the time and the effort and the work to build the foundation for what's going on here. And so, where it's awesome, it's not about me and it's not about him, it's about this community that we live in. All I did was create a page and the community picked off with it. And so it just, it's an awesome place to be and an awesome place to be a part of.
Rachel, I don't know if you recall, I contacted her shortly after I saw the page go up and I knew how successful it was going to be and I said, I'm really concerned about you moving too fast with this because it was taking off fast. And I could, I knew the value and I didn't want them to burn out. And she said, no problem, we can handle it. And then two days later, there are 20 of them are tearing down a house in Alpena, I believe it was.
It was Green Forest, yeah.
And Green Forest. So, I mean, it's just amazing and please, slow down, take your time because I'd like this thing to last forever. It makes so much sense. I've got something I don't need, somebody needs it, vice versa. You know, you need help with this, it really does. I've got a plaque I want to present to you folks. And you are the first recipient of this great award. And this reads, City of Harrison is honored to stow the Good Neighbor Award upon Rachel and Caleb Couch in appreciation of forming the volunteer organization, Neighbors Helping Neighbors. How about that?
And they're so young.
Okay, that's going to lead us into my segment, which I'm going to do a little different tonight. Some of you have been around for several years and if you've seen the State of the City report given, this is something that's required by the municipal league to, for the mayor to report during the month of January on the state of the city. And what I want to do is take a look back and give you a rewind of 2019 and some of the achievements that the city has made. And I just cannot say enough about the people. I'm talking about the department heads all the way down to the lower ranks, the people around this table. It's just amazing. I think I said to Wade today, we have such a team that if we don't get things done now, we never will. So now we have an opportunity. Want to start by talking about money. We had seven of the high, of the 12 highest sales pack months in history this last year. We also had, we changed our investment, it's totally safe, it's CD form, but we shared it with three different banks and we picked up nearly $200,000 last year. So that was a, that was a big jump for us. Our ISO rating went to two. Two, like peace, two. Big deal.
Big deal.
I wish we could tell the community how much money that amounted to in home insurance premiums. I don't know what it is, but it's big. We also bought a half a million dollar fire truck that's got a little black look to it and it's pretty cool when it drives around town. We also, I'm not sure this is the picture, but we did a, a water rescue over in Alpena this year that we believe saved a couple lives.
Yes.
And, and a lot of that was due to the fact that we had the water rescue raft. What's that thing called?
SS Mary Jean.
SS Mary Jean.
We voted hard for that.
You did. That was a big deal and it's a quality item that we have on hand. We implemented the business license. Not only does this business license allow us to know what's out there inside these businesses, but it also helps us keep that ISO 2 rating. This was a tragedy that's outside of Harrison and the reason I posted this is there were several agencies involved. This was a, two people died in this fire and it just so happens our police chief, our fire chief, excuse me, he was part of pulling the bodies out. And the reason I wanted to show this, we go out of town for anything that's needed. I'm talking police and fire. Mark mentioned to me, we were up in Ponca three times this week. Is that correct?
Last three weeks.
Last three weeks. Three times in Ponca. Who would ever guess that the city of Harrison serves not only Boone County, but a lot of the surrounding counties when needed? So it's a, and we don't think about it. We, you know, I'm sure it costs us a lot of money to do that, but it's, it's what we need to do. We installed cameras outside in the back immediately. I think that happened right off the bat in January. There wasn't any cameras in back and that's where they unload prisoners and, you know, to help the safety of the, of the police and other people in the back. Of course, we had the second largest drug bust in the history of Arkansas. And this was led by the Drug Task Force. It also included Boone County Sheriff, our Harrison Police, and the FBI. 150 pounds of meth and three cartel members that were taken away. So that was, that was big. It was followed up by a raid that took down 24 indictments that went away to federal penitentiaries. So that, and I think that's a good example of these people working together, these organizations working together. We also sent the dogs out to the highway. I know they've been there a little bit, but Chris said, that's where you find the dope. Let's put the dogs, go get the dope. So they went out, they got the dope, they got a little money while they were out there and they got some guns. So the dogs are almost 100% full-time on the highway. We had two dogs. What are their names, Sergeant?
Jerry and Rocky.
Jerry and Rocky. Okay, which ones up, up there?
That would be Jerry.
That'd be Jerry? Way to go. Okay, this is a DWI stop there. It's actually, what's it called? Sobriety checkpoint. And we implemented that this year. That had not been implemented since 2010. So you're going to see in all those police reports, DWIs, they're up considerably this year over last. That doesn't mean that more people are, are drinking and driving. It means that we're catching them with a lot of these sobriety checkpoints. So good job again. This is something I threw up because a lot of people don't know these things happen. This is one detective here in the office that last year, from April to December, extracted info from 147 cell phones. He worked on 147 cell phones. Who would even know we do that stuff? We have got an incredible group of detectives and a task force that's second to none. Getting the public works a little bit, we did a lot of sidewalk work. We did a pretty good sidewalk over in your neighborhood, Bill.
You did.
I think a lot of South Cherry. And, and you know, doing new sidewalks sometimes can be easier because over there we had to pull out a lot of the old sidewalk that was in real bad shape. We received 1.65 million in federal grant money that's going to be used this coming year up at Gobber Drive. But that was the largest grant that Harrison has ever received in federal grant money or any grant money. This was a picture that just touches my heart every time I see it because I can feel Holden Hur right now, that's Willa. And we're partnering on the park with Parks and Rec, the City of Harrison, Rotary Club. We obtained $250,000 in grant money. The city has contributed a lot of in-kind and then Rotary raised, I think it was over $100,000. And you'll see work is already started down there. We're laying the foundation right now to the new Wonder Willa Park. You'll also find that two, just maybe 100 feet away, we're erecting a new playground equipment that we replaced last year. We just got the new playground equipment in and we're going to put that up soon. So that whole park will be, will be new. We replaced streetlights. We had a commitment to do 100. We put 100 in the budget and we've already replaced about 60. We started that process in August and that's really helping to brighten up some of these dark streets. Some of the older neighborhoods had no streetlights. We also have made a, a commitment to be very proactive in identifying the streetlights that the bulbs are out. And if anybody does see any of those, there's a number on there and if they send us that number along with the street name, we'll get that replaced. But that's something we're, we're taking a good. Water service calls. Who would have guessed we had 1,333 water service calls during the last year? How many is that a week? 50 a week? Something like that. But you can see the guys working there. They laid three, over three miles of water and sewer pipe. And they are on call 24/7. I think this was something that required them to get out of the worn bed and jump into the mud, as that one guy did. We just had to share that picture one more time. We were able to condemn six houses that needed to be torn down. This was the first time in, that we can recall that we actually condemned and took down houses. We removed three. We were actually able to find investors that took two that rehabbed the houses and we still have one of the six left that has an asbestos issue that's going to require abatement, but that'll be dealt with this year. So that was a, a big success that we've been wanting to do for some time. This is something that I took very personal because I've been involved in this for some time, but along with Public Works and the Fire Department, we were able to identify early on in the year, the houses that I rated number eight and nine. The 10 were the tear downs. These are eight and nine. These are the worst of the worst. We identified around 20 of these that existed in town. And, you know, when you have a neighborhood and so many of our neighborhoods look so nice, even the older neighborhoods, they look wonderful and then you get a house like this sitting in the middle of them. It just destroys the whole street, the whole neighborhood. So we made a commitment to work this. We got a policy now that So we made a commitment to work this, we got a policy now that works, we figured out how to work it, and all twenty that we worked on, I think, are gone. All twenty. Now, there may be a couple more pop up that we weren't aware of. One thing we were able to do, realized we have two water people that go out and check meters, and they hit the streets, they go through every neighborhood once a month. So we've asked them to give us addresses when they see a bad house, because, you know, you can drive around forever and maybe not see one, but I just had one turned in today by a, a water meter guy. So, that's a good thing. Uh, yeah, there's another one there. So, this is really, really important to me, and I'm sure it's important to all of you guys. Uh, Kiwanis Dog Park, again, along with Chuck and Parks and Rec, uh, the city and Kiwanis, they stepped up and wrote a check for twenty-five-thousand dollars to create this dog park. This is probably the best investment any civic group has ever made. This park is gonna be one of the most popular things in town. It's really worked so, it's worked real well so far. I'm amazed, because usually, when you jump out of the box and create something like this, you learn a lot, but, uh, they pretty much had it right. Uh, we did a recycling, uh, campaign early spring, we identified that we were on the verge of losing recycling. Uh, Orion, the new company, created these labels for us, we recruited volunteers. Uh, Rachel, this would've been something for your group, but, uh, we got it done, and, uh, they, uh, they've got about seventy-five percent of the containers labeled. Uh, Orion has a new, uh, district manager that's been with them about a month. He told us that now our recycling is cleaner than Rogers', he came from Rogers'. So that was, uh, that was great news to hear, I know how passionate you are, Linda, about recycling, so. Uh, this is, uh, this is a goose.
Yeah.
And, uh, we had about two-hundred of them down at the park this year, and they just destroyed the park. And if you folks don't go down at the park and see the goose droppings that are all over the place, and I made a commitment one day, I felt, this has to be taken care of, and I didn't know how to do it, and I still am not sure. But I said to myself, I'm going down to the park every day, because if you don't go down there, you don't think about it. But if you go down there, you get upset, and then you go figure out ways to do things. We pulled out the machines that we were using a few years back, uh, Wade's department put up new signs that says, quit feeding the geese.
No geese at all.
And then we, uh, brought in Church 180, and we hooked them up with fire hoses, and, uh, we have a hydrant right down there in the middle, and twice a week, they would hose it off. Now, that worked, it was wonderful, but it was also kind of the end of the geese season. It was near the end of summer when we knew we had it under control, so we're gonna find out again, but especially with the Wonder Willa Park down there, we've gotta make sure that we keep that park clean, so. Uh, I wanna end with this. This is how we started the year last year, and I want us to continue to remember John and Amy. That was a tragedy that this town had never experienced anything like it before. And, uh, we are back to that. Folks, you have in your packets there, um, a list of achievements that are, you know, a lot more than that, and then you have a list of our goals. All the department heads have put together their goals for next year, and we've compiled those in a report to you.
Yes.
So you'll have, I know it's several pages, but if you look through there, and if you see something else that we need to add, you think we need to address, please let us know. Uh, but it's a, I think all the departments has taken this very serious. Uh, we have staff meeting once a week, it, it runs about an hour, and Bill, I sure apologize for what you brought up, uh, I'm not looking for excuses, but this was a holiday week and we lost that day, but nevertheless, we gotta, we gotta get that issue corrected. Uh, so with that in mind, any questions from the council? Any questions or comments from the audience? Uh, yes?
Just Mayor and Council, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce the Boone County Leadership Institute class of 2019-2020. Uh, we've got several of their members here this evening, if you guys could stand, please?
Yeah.
Uh, Boone County Leadership Institute is presented by Kinetik by Windstream. They're one of our great businesses in the community that have committed to work on leadership with the Chamber of Commerce and the community. Um, we have ten students, uh, in the leadership class this year that have, are going through a ten-month program of learning about the community and the state. We're proud of these ten, uh, they devote at least one full day a month, usually a lot more in their off time, like coming here to learn about city government, uh, see the city council in action. And I would appreciate each of them telling, uh, introducing themselves, and most importantly, the business that has invested in their future in that business. Where do you want to start?
Shannon Farby, I'm with Sanctuary.
Paula Carson, I'm with Innen Living.
Suzanne Byer, I'm with North Arkansas College.
Ty Freeman, Bank of ZK.
Brandon Coen, also North Arkansas College.
Wade Edwards, FedEx Freight.
Ganon Roberts, FedEx Freight.
This is an example of the folks that are going to take your place sooner than you may realize. We're proud of them and what they do, and I just want to make sure that you recognize them.
Absolutely. Thank you all for coming. Okay, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Got it, I'm back.
Yeah. Uh, he mentioned up there on the board, February 27th is the council meeting, not the 20th, so we, uh, that's the fourth, uh, fourth Thursday, so the 6th and the 22nd. Thank you all for coming. Yes, Mary Jean.
I'm back.